... meeting, we have a public hearing tonight on the text amendment to the Unified Development Code, and we have two alternative sign plan amendments. So that will go to the consent agenda, the minutes of the last meeting, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have motion to approve, and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, we'll move on to second agenda item, the public hearing. Open the public hearing, and call on Mr. McDonald for a list of the exhibits.
Mr. Chairman, the city has five exhibits. Number one is the staff report with attachments. Number two is the affidavit publication in the Blue Springs Examiner. Number three is the application with attachments. Number four is Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances. Number five is the 2003 Comprehensive Plan. Those are all of the exhibits the city would offer under the record at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Planning Commission. As you read in the memorandum to yourself, Mr. Chairman, in the Planning Commission, from Jim Holly, Assistant Director of Community Development, the city of Blue Springs has, does not have, excuse me, a zoning designation for public lands or open space. Staff had been asked by us, members of City Council and administration, to research how other cities use zoning to protect their public spaces, and in Blue Springs, we have many public lands that are zoned for single-family development, SF7 zoning, for example. Again, City Council then directed staff, after their last meeting, actually, meeting back in February, to prepare a zoning amendment that provides a designation for the protection of public open spaces from conventional development. Again, with those many public lands that are zoned for single-family development, they could essentially be redeveloped into a single-family residential subdivision, for example, without the benefit of a public hearing, because they could just simply go straight to a platting process. Therefore, at the meeting back in February, the City Council isn't necessarily as concerned with city-owned land, which you can see here on the map, there's city-owned land as well as state land in terms of Barrowoke Woods, but this shows just the scattered public land in terms of primarily parkland, under the city ownership, or state ownership, as it were, and you can see the varied categories of zoning for those. For example, even Adams Dairy Golf Course, majority of that still remains as remnant county agricultural zoning, so it's not even a city-designated zoning district as it currently stands. Again, in research that planning staff provided over the last, or put together over the last month or so, we determined that many cities do have specific zoning category for public lands, parks, and open space. In this manner, the city can control what uses occur on these lands through zoning. Again, it would require our standard rezoning process in terms of public notice, notification to adjacent landowners and such. We did find that in the 19 ordinances from cities within the Kansas City metro area, five of them actually do have zoning designations for parkland and open space or conservation districts. Therefore, we've, what we've submitted here for your consideration this evening, for lack of a better term, follows those designations in terms of what we're calling public land and open space zoning district. Now, again, this can also be used for privately-held land that may be categorized, as you can see there, not necessarily the public land portion, but the open space portion. So example, for example, a privately-owned golf course could utilize this zoning district to help protect that open space from what we're calling, again, just conventional development. We've put together a draft UDC amendment, UDC text amendment, which is, again, this before you this evening for the public hearing, and that's listed as Attachment B. Want to go through that just somewhat briefly, but certainly would be open for any questions on that. Primarily, I wanted to point out the use table, again, identifying specific uses that would be permitted, or not permitted, or conditional, conditionally permitted, that is, with the public land and open space. Again, the standards are pretty consistent in terms of lot size, lot width, so on and so forth, building coverage, very consistent with those five other communities that we've mentioned in the metro area. Again, there are nine other ordinances we looked at throughout the state of Missouri. This is the use table I wanted to bring to your attention. The, again, for lack of any other place to put it, as it currently stands, we did just place that public designation, or the PLOS, public land and open space, in the first column, just as adding a new column there. First off, the highlighted portion here talks about microwind turbines as being permitted. Again, we're looking just at the publicly-owned land, city land, that would be perhaps a benefit, just to list that as permitted. However, there was some discussion, I know, prior to this meeting, at changing that, as to changing that to conditional designation rather than permitted, because if we're referring as well to privately-held land, excuse me, it would be more appropriate to list that as a conditional use, much like you see on the far right of the column in other zoning districts as it currently stands. The same holds true for these other highlighted uses. Again, if you're considering, for example, just a larger tract of land for a golf course, restaurant, fast food, restaurant general, retail sales, are often accessory uses as related to that golf course use, would not necessarily need to be listed as permitted, but could be listed as conditional instead. The same with a telecommunications facility, again, for a publicly-held land, thinking back to the Graygrounds Park, Verizon Tower out there, that was, again, something on a publicly-held piece of land, but for privately-held land, it would be more appropriate to list that as conditional. So those are the five categories that staff wanted to note as ones that perhaps need to be modified to conditional. Again, these were just put together from staff for your discussion, so if there are any other changes or considerations we need to take under advisement, we're certainly open to that. With that, again, this is under the direction of the City Council at their meeting when this was last discussed, as a discussion item, there was direction given to staff to, again, just look at placing this in the Unified Development Code as a new zoning district, but not specifically look at any individual property to be rezoned to this district at this time. So simply place this in the code and allow it as an option, again, primarily for private landowners to utilize this new zoning district. Again, with that in mind, staff went back and looked at this draft, or now proposed, formally-proposed use table, and would like some direction and suggestions on those, at least those five highlighted uses just mentioned. So with that, again, your recommendation would go forward to City Council. Again, if there is a recommendation made tonight, that would go to the April 5th City Council meeting, as well as at a public hearing at that time, and presumably would be enacted and made a part of the Unified Development Code as a new zoning district for Blue Springs. So with that, certainly open for any questions.
Are there questions for Mr. Allen? Mr. Phillips?
A couple of questions, and I anxiously waiting to hear the rest of the comments on this as well, but there is a category here that I think needs to be included also on a conditional use, and that's club-private.
Okay.
Obviously, a private club would be also, would be that same ancillary use, like the restaurant, or the sale, the retail sales, or something like that. And I think all those other ones that you highlighted should definitely be conditional and not, not be permitted, or we're going to end up with somebody tearing down a golf course to put up a strip of restaurants.
Right, that was certainly our concern without any additional conditions or direction.
And nothing we could do to stop them.
Certainly, and that's why, again, considering just publicly-held land permitted seemed more appropriate, but for, exactly for development's sake, conditional certainly made more sense.
The second question I have is that if we did create this district, the, on the privately-held land, the landowner himself would have to come before us to get this changed to that district, is that correct? Or would it be something that other people could change, could come in and want to get somebody, in other words, say, again, I think the real thing here is a golf course. You've got residents who live around the golf course, and they want to make sure that thing stays a golf course. They can't come in and change the zoning. The owner of the golf course has to change the zoning, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, that really leads to a question I had. Why would they voluntarily ask to be rezoned as that? It limits their options, what they could do with that land. If the golf course came in and asked to be rezoned, then it limits them to being a golf course or a public park.
Right.
So why would they voluntarily do that?
Well, that's the provision that this would allow, is that it would provide that designation for the protection of those public, or in this case, open spaces, from conventional development. So it would allow that protection to be placed upon that property through zoning, in terms of a zoning protection.
The only reason I can think of why the property owner would do that would be as an incentive to sell the property around it, to guarantee to the future homeowners that this is always going to be this way. That's, but as an existing setup, I don't, I don't see any incentive for him to do that.
I don't either.
It's a level of, again, zoning protection, and it is just that, it's zoning protection, it's not restricted covenants or deeds that are specifically a privately-held, but, again, it's a level of protection from, through zoning, that's not currently an option even.
I don't understand what they're being protected against.
I think as Mr. Phillips mentioned, it would be essentially setting that property aside as more permanent open space rather than something that could possibly be turned into conventional development without the benefit of public hearings.
I don't have any objection to this, but I just didn't see what impact it was going to have. Are there other questions?
I do have a question.
Yes.
Mr. Allen, can you, can you tell me the difference between recreation and entertainment indoor and recreation and entertainment outdoor? And would that include, like, shelter houses? Would it also include bowling facilities?
Sure, I see Mr. Holly feverishly looking at the definitions for us, but just off the top of my head, for example, the recreation indoor, yeah, could certainly be bowling alley. A lot of that was, that differentiation was made back when we established more specific criteria for, like, paintball uses indoor versus outdoor. There are outdoor paintball, obviously, there's also indoor. So something of that nature, but Jim has anything additional to add?
I don't, unless you would like to hear the definition of those two, which I can give to you. Is that something you're?
Sure, is it in here and I just missed it, or?
It's very easy. Recreation and entertainment indoor is a use offering recreation, entertainment, or games of skill to the public for a fee or charge that is wholly enclosed in a building, and then it provides typical uses, including bowling alleys, indoor theaters, bingo parlors, pool halls, billiard parlors, video game arcades. Recreation and entertainment outdoors is a use offering recreation, entertainment, or games of skill to the public for a fee or charge wherein any portion of the activity takes place in the open. Typical uses would include an archery range, batting cage, golf driving ranges, drive-in theaters, miniature golf courses.
Well, it seems like there's a lot of commercial activity in those definitions, and I got, I guess, in addition to trying to see if someone would build a single-family residential in these designations, it appears that if this was rezoned to this open space common area, that a lot of commercial activities would be allowed within there that typically may require a commercial-type zoning versus a more recreational or open space, public space type zoning. I guess that would be my.
Very good point, certainly. That's, appreciate the feedback, that's something we're, I would say, struggling with, but a little bit in terms of permitted versus conditional or prohibited entirely, and with, as Jim mentioned, with the definitions as they are, it really is, it's commercial or it's just not permitted.
And just to add to that, one of the things we struggled with when we looked at this zoning was, do we want to put uses in a use table, or do we want to provide under special uses and then list those out as various types of uses that would be accessory to, similar to what we've done with some of the other zoning districts. We originally proposed it this way and didn't really get any feedback, so any feedback we get tonight really helps us in moving forward as we look at this.
Well, it seemed like some of the examples that you provided as well, they were, they were trying to look for this type of a zoning classification to preserve conservation areas or conservation districts that may need to be protected along streams or, or along very sensitive areas, and not allow your more common zoning classification to rule.
And your point is that a commercial business of some sort could be brought into those, right?
Correct.
I think it's a very valid point. Okay, any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this? Anyone that would like to speak in opposition to this? Bring it back up here for comments. I was very in favor of it, so Mark's comment here, and I'm really.
Well, if I could comment, and one of the reasons why I asked the question I asked was, I'm not sure that I see the need for this, because it seems to be more protected as it is, and I don't see the incentive for the property owner to go in and rezone the property. What I see is I see neighboring properties coming in and saying, hey, we want this rezoned so that the land adjacent to us never gets changed, and that's not the way things should be. So I don't really see the need for it if we are going to do something like this. I definitely think all of these uses that are even slightly commercial or built should be conditional or only as ancillary to the open space itself.
Are there other comments? Closed public hearing, call for a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would move that we recommend that this change amendment is denied.
Second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please. This is to deny this. Right.
Commissioner May?
Aye.
Call Pepper?
Aye.
Haney?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Banks?
Aye.
Trozen?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Okay, the motion is unanimously approved, which says that the code text amendment has been denied. We recommend that it not be adopted. All right, we'll move on to agenda item number three, Master Alternative Sign Plan for Adams Dairy Landing. Mr. Holly?
Before you tonight is a request for yet another amendment to the alternative master sign plan for Adams Dairy Landing, and as you can see on the map above, the property is located primarily east of Adams Dairy Parkway and along Coronado Drive. However, Area 3 is located west of Adams Dairy Parkway and, again, north of Coronado The proposed sign amendment is really fairly straightforward, and if you'll notice on page three of eight, there's a statement bolded there that says the proposed amendment could impact wall signage in all three areas of the development. We wrote that in there because, of course, the development is yet to be finished, and we're not positive what buildings will go in. As it's proposed and approved in the concept plan, Areas 2 and 3 would never have a building large enough to meet the criteria for the change that they're proposing, and they are proposing this change primarily because as the tenants have, have come forward and actually defined the areas that they are going to be taking, they have found that some of the tenants that were always anticipated to be sub-major tenants took a little bit less square footage than they had originally thought, and therefore, they want to continue to be able to provide them with the signage that they had anticipated in the first place. So if you will go to page five of eight, you can see clearly that what they're proposing then is to lower, if you'll go to the sub-major tenant, they're reducing that square footage from 15,000 down to 11,500, and of course, that changed then the small shops as well. They did provide, and I think included in your packet, a color rendering that gives you some perspective on what they're talking about for signage, and as you can see with the Staples and the Petco, those then would be sub-major tenants. Your smaller tenants would then be Gap. I can't even read the. Maurice's famous footwear. Yeah, the other two sub-major tenants that aren't shown on here, they are, actually, I guess they are in the lower elevations, is Michael's and Books-A-Million. Staff is recommending approval of the amendment to the sign program with one condition, and that condition simply refers back to the originally or previously approved conditions that should remain in full force with this approval. I know the applicant is here, and otherwise, if you have any questions, I'll stand for those.
Other questions for Mr. Holly? Any comments or motion? The applicant like to make a presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jeff McMahon, Red Development, I don't have a presentation. We've read staff comments, we agree with the comments, and be available for any questions.
Questions? Yes.
I have a question that's not directly related to this, but it does make me curious. If the, if these sub-majors are reducing their square footage, are we reducing the square footage of the overall development, or are we getting some more smaller stores?
That's actually a very good question.
That's why I ask.
Yeah. It's such a slight reduction. Really, probably the best example is the classification that we're making the proposed amendment to as a sub-major, it just classifies Petco, Staples, Michael's, and Books-A-Million in the same classification. Books-A-Million went, I believe, they're at 15,000 before, they went down to like 12,500, so you lost 25,000, but I believe Michael's went up slightly, and so it's kind of a push-me-pull-you type thing, but at the end of the day, we have to have a certain density to pay the TIF and, you know, meet the obligations of the property, so in this case, it just happens that one of the tenants dropped below the minimum that was set on the signed plan previously, so that we're just trying to revise that to make them, what we call build-to-suit sub-major tenants fit into the same classification.
Didn't Target and Coles as well go smaller?
Target and Coles fit in the major classification, so that's the next step up. Target, no, they, I think they're 135,000 feet and they've stayed, they've stayed that way.
One of Target or Coles went down a simple amount.
I believe it was Coles.
It may have been Coles.
That was very early on in the process.
Yeah. It may have been, it may have been Coles, but we, that's why we're here, is because it's kind of a, you're moving target when you're leasing these things up. You know, last year's plan for a tenant that may have been 5,000 feet, this year, they're merchandising 12,500, and so, yes, it does, we do try to make an accommodation for that and maybe add a piece of building to another tenant, like, for instance, the small shops between Petco and Target may have grown slightly to make up for the loss of the 25,000 for the Books-A-Million, so, yeah, it goes somewhere.
We should not net out less square footage total?
No.
Is what you're saying?
Right.
Or at least very slightly.
Right.
Other questions? Thank you. Now, any comments? Motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would move for approval of ASP 2102506, subject to staff comments.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, approved. We'll move on to agenda item four, Master Alternative Sign Plan for Adams Dairy Bank.
Again, this is a request for an approval of an amendment to the approved Coronado Place Master Alternative Sign Plan, and Coronado Place, as most of you know, is located west of Adams Dairy Parkway, north of Coronado Drive, south of I-70, almost immediately across from Walmart and the corner property on Sunnyside School Road. It is just east of Sports City. This, this particular request came as Adams Dairy Bank looked at their signage, and Adams Dairy Bank is located, and I think, that this map probably is the easiest way to show you, is located as the easternmost tenant space in the east multi-tenant retail building. Adams Dairy Bank, as they've looked at their signage, and particularly their tower signage with the original approval, they were, they were granted three signs, one on the north, one on the south, and one on the east. They are now requesting or looking to put one on the west side of that tower. On page four of six in the last paragraph, staff has described the three criteria that are used in the sign code, but the particular criteria that we were looking at when we made our recommendation really comes from Table 3, which basically says that, that signage is allowed over, over, on any facade that's facing a street or over the main entrance, and, of course, the west facade of the tower does neither of those, so staff provided a recommendation that this be denied, just to be consistent with the code. However, we did, on page six of six, note- However, we did on page six of six note that should the planning commission choose to approve it, there would be one condition, and that condition then would refer back to the six conditions that were approved with the previous master alternative sign plan, that those remain in full force. I know the applicant is here, if you have questions, and also I'll stand for questions if there are any questions.
Questions, Mr. Hawley? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do the applicant like to make a presentation?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. It's always a privilege to come before you and discuss the application of our various development codes and what they mean in terms of economic development, and to suggest to you how you should apply them tonight. I want to give you a little background first about this institution because it plays into the application of the sign code. Adams Dairy Bank is a local bank. In fact, we hadn't had, we used to have local banks, Blue Springs Bank and some others years ago, and those, with changes in the banking industry, changed so that they're now almost all out-of-town banks. We truly didn't have a local bank until a couple of years ago when Adams Dairy Bank came along, composed of exact statistics the president's here and will talk to you about, but 180 local investors, mostly in this area, close to 80% in Missouri, and it truly is a local bank and a one-location bank. They have decided to locate in the Adams Dairy corridor, and the Adams Dairy corridor has some restrictions, as you know, that are not applicable to other businesses that are along I-70. As you're aware, the sign ordinance has a 100-foot buffer along I-70 that allows businesses like Applebee's and McDonald's and others to have pole signs that are very visible and easy to see, but because they decided to locate in the corridor, they didn't have that provision available. So they decided that in meeting with the conditions of the corridor, four-sided architecture, and a desire to have a unique and a very architecturally pleasing building, that they would go with a tower format, and I'm going to talk a little bit about that more in a moment. But first, I think it's always important to remember why the sign ordinance exists. It is not... Well, unfortunately, I didn't blow this one up big enough. The next one I do, so I'll help my reason of it, but remember, it's not a got-you circumstance. The purpose of the sign ordinance is to provide for good aesthetics, to get rid of visual clutter, but to do some other things, too. Thank you, Jim, I always forget how to zoom on that. Encourage the effective use of signs as a means of communication, protect, conserve, and enhance property values, to enhance the attractiveness and economic well-being of Blue Springs as a place to live and conduct business. Well, those broad outlines certainly aren't enough to guide a body like you or anyone else in making a determination for an applicant, so we had to have particular rules which are set in place. How many square feet you can have on a building, where you can have it located, how it's set up, how you apply. But realizing that those strict guidelines would not always apply the best circumstances for the city, we had the alternate sign plan possibility. And staff has pointed out to you that, now I have to figure, no, this is going to work. Conditions which need to be met, other than just saying, hey, this makes sense, we have some guidelines to be applied. Have we submitted a complete application? We have. Number two, the development site contains unique or unusual physical conditions, unique or unusual physical conditions, you read on down, that limit or restrict normal sign visibility. I want to show you a picture of our existing sign situation now. This is coming eastbound on I-70. This is the bank. This is the north-facing sign. With the advent of the enormous Target sign, what has happened is that people coming east, their eyes are drawn to that sign, they don't see our bank logo on the north side at all. We've had many people who go by and say, we didn't see you. They call, they have to turn around, they come back. And remember, and this hearkens back to what I said about us being a local bank, very small advertising budget. So for us, a sign is truly a means of advertising in addition to being a locator. We've lost our advertising utility of this sign on the north side completely because of these unusual circumstances which were man-made or man-created. The proposed existing development exists unique characteristics of land or architectural style. Even if this circumstance continued and we were the McDonald's with a pole sign and the golden arches or an Applebee's sticking up, or as you know, within 100 feet, they can be pretty high, we'd probably be able to be seen. But because we have chosen to be in the corridor with a very nice architectural style, we are limited to the faces of our buildings. So our architecture is unique and that it represents a clear variation of conventional development. If you would approve it, this is all we have. Now we have the same attractive, not gaudy, not glow-in-the-dark, but signage on the eastbound side that can be seen clearly and would be the appropriate both advertising and locator for coming businesses. It would, it fits and incorporates our logo within the building architecture in terms of the squareness of the sign, going in with the straight lines and block style of the tower. It fits all those circumstances. And perhaps most importantly, I hearken back to the original reasons why this should be applied. It just makes good sense. It is not visual clutter, it causes no problems with surrounding buildings, it's not a blight in the community, it's attractive, it fits the conditions, it's something that should be approved. And we think we have the reasons why it should be approved here, and we would ask that you do so. Tonight, I have two people who want to address you. David Chinnery, David, come on up, who is president of the bank, and then Brad Scott. David?
Excellent. First of all, everyone knows where the bank is, right? Hopefully? Okay, the importance of this, we truly are a small community bank, as you know. From a marketing standpoint, we're obviously limited in the amount of money we can spend. Well, this truly is good money for us. I mean, it's well-spent and all. To put this in perspective, you know, if we would have, I guess, had the foresight to know that that Target sign or the other sign was going to be there, we probably would have done things a little bit different, but we didn't. Just to put this in perspective, at night, if you drive by there, our north-facing sign you can hardly even see anymore. The brightness of that sign is so large that it took us about three weeks to figure out why our signs turned on, and then our lights go off. I don't know if you noticed that, but all our lights at the bank exterior turned off because that sign was so bright, it turned our electric eyes off. So we had to obviously redo that, but that kind of just puts in perspective of how bright the Target sign is in relation to our little sign. We are a small bank, we want to take advantage of the 55,000 eastbound cars that go by there every day. Traffic counts approximately 110,000 cars a day. We think we're reaching some of those, but we'd like to reach the rest of them. It really does make a difference in us. We obviously are a Blue Springs bank, but we've been very fortunate to do very well in the Odessa, Grove, and Green Valley areas. So our whole objective is obviously to get this traffic as they're driving back home, and a lot of those people, especially in Green Valley, exit on Adams Dairy Parkway. The other thought is, all of us from Blue Springs, and we know that Adams Dairy is a region, okay? Well, when you're giving directions to someone else, the assumption if someone is coming from Oval Park or somewhere else, if you say Adams Dairy, they assume you're right on Adams Dairy Parkway, okay? And obviously, we're off of Adams Dairy Parkway, so this just gives us that much more visibility. Trying to think of what else. Any questions for me at all? Anything? Excellent. I'll turn over to Brad.
Right before Brad speaks, there was one sign that David brought up that I should have put out so that you'd know. What's that other one? The fourth one? Yeah, this is it. Why do we want to catch them coming home? Because this is what they get on the way to work. So we're somewhat obscured for westbound traffic. Brad?
And we have copies of those if you...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Brad Scott. I'm on the Board of Directors with Adams Dairy Bank, and also with us tonight is Bill Essman, who's also a member of the board. David Chinnery is a longtime banker, started out in Windsor, Missouri, and his dream was to establish a community bank, or what's called relationship banking. When I graduated, or before I graduated high school from Blue Springs in 1982, everybody met there on Friday night before we took our dates out. And that bank served this community well as a community-oriented bank. I believe that much of that type of old-fashioned, Main Street banking has left the market, and certainly left the market in Blue Springs. David approached me about two years ago to be on the Board of Directors, and when he explained to me the business model, which was, we're going to be set up by a major corporation who will own 51% of our stock, 49% will be held locally, and we'll populate our bank board with all local civic leaders and entrepreneurs, and then they'll recruit customers to come into our bank and bank at Adams Dairy Bank. And then, in turn, we'll make loans within the community from people that they pour into our bank. Well, that model proved to be spectacularly profitable for us. Unfortunately, our parent company, CBC, based out of Michigan, has, since I'm on the record, has experienced some difficulties. And so several months ago, our chairman, Bill Reissinger, and the Board of Directors made a decision that this little bank would buy out our parent company, as it were, their 51%. We're involved in a private offering right now. We're a small but profitable bank. We went from zero to $44 million in assets. We became profitable six months ahead of schedule. We believe that we're providing something great to this community in as much as 76% of all the people who bank are from Blue Springs. And as David said, we're penetrating Green Valley, Oak Grove, Bates City, Odessa. Because we're the largest intersection between Kansas City and Columbia and a true asset to this community, we believe that people make decisions to bank with us by virtue of the wise decisions that you made relative to Walmart, Home Depot, Target, and the other retail centers. We're that added amenity that we think could be the tipping point for people to come to that crossroads. In addition, we complement your architecture, we complement your styling. It's another reason for people to come to that crossroads and shop at that crossroads. We have no competitor near us. Moreover, the market is doing us a favor by some banks evaporating. So we continue to progress. We would very much favor having this small request granted to us. We are a small bank, we don't plan to branch, we don't plan to try to penetrate the markets in Kansas. We grow deliberately, and where we make money for our investors, our shareholders, and for our customers is on the margins, on the margins. We keep our overhead extremely low, and we move money daily because we're small. We can do that to the benefit of our investors and to the benefit of our customers. This little signage may not seem like much to you, but when 55,000 cars go by going home, they make a decision to where they'll bank based upon, a lot of times, the conveniences of all the amenities around them. Again, all of our board members are local leaders, local entrepreneurs who've contributed to the community and continue to recruit for our bank to be the hometown bank of Blue Springs. We hope you look upon our requests favorably. Thank you.
Sounds like you're so successful, I don't know why you need this sign.
Sir, I could answer that question? I've watched David Chinnery operate, and you've heard the old saying, if you mind the pennies, the pounds will take care of themselves. David is a very parsimonious and very conservative banker, and each opportunity we have to promote ourselves, we take. And what you all have done at this crossroads at Adams Dairy Parkway is a marvel, and we believe that we're part of the offering that you've created out at Adams Dairy. So thank you, sir.
Mr. Phillips, would the proposed sign change have any impact on this?
No. No, the proposed ordinances would still say that a sign not facing a right-of-way would not be allowed.
We'd be glad to address any questions if anybody has any.
Are there any questions for Mr. Grounds?
I have a question, but it may be more directed to staff, maybe Mr. Grounds might want to respond to that question.
All right, sure.
I guess I'm trying to understand, when we're looking at the east facade where that sign was permitted because supposedly it faced the road right-of-way, although the building's not on the corner, why isn't the visibility from the west side the same as far as facing the public right-of-way because of the curvature in I-70?
When the alternative sign plan was originally approved, Adams Dairy Road right-of-way was located immediately east of this development. It has since been vacated because of alignment between Home Depot and the Area 3 of Red Development, but initially, that sign did face a right-of-way, and it was the Adams Dairy Road right-of-way.
Any other questions or comments? All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would make a motion for approval of ASP 3102513, Adams Dairy Bank, subject to staff recommendations.
Second? Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Have approval.
Thank you very much.
All right, that's all of the agenda items. Are there any other business items that need to be brought up? You're taking a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Close to me.
He didn't show up. We're wearing our shirts. And he's a guy that you won't let wear your shirt. I know where he's at. He didn't show up. He's wearing his shirt. He's not here. He's wearing his shirt. He's wearing his shirt. He's not here. He's wearing his shirt. He's not here. He's wearing his shirt. 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 He's wearing his shirt.